We'll call the January 20th City Council meeting to order. Commissioner Banksen will give us the invocation, pledge, and fact of the day.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this day that we come together to do the business for the people. Lord, we ask for your wisdom, for your guidance and direction. Father, we thank you as you continue to navigate our nation as we move forward as a nation together. Father, bring a spirit of unity upon us and let us come together as a people. Lord, we ask you to bless this evening, and we give you the praise in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the fact of the day, January 18th, 1919, world leaders began a peace conference to officially negotiate the end of World War I. The conference would take six months to complete. Leaders from allied forces, including France, Great Britain, and Italy, met in Paris to negotiate the terms for reparations to be paid by Germany as part of the Treaty of Versailles, which was signed on June 28th, 1919.
Okay. Just for the record, I want to let you know that Commissioner Becker has, one of his family members has COVID, so he's not here tonight, but will be, I guess, is on Zoom with us or some sort of...
Yeah, I can hear you, Mayor.
Awesome. All right. Thanks, Commissioner.
Hey, everybody, thanks for letting me and allowing me to join remotely. I can't promise you that I'm dressed in a suit and tie, but I can promise I'm drinking my Dunkin' coffee.
All right. Awesome. Okay, so what we're going to need to do tonight, instead of just doing ayes and nays, we're going to have to do a roll call, just so we get, make sure that Commissioner Becker is included in this. Okay, approval of amendments. Any changes need to be made? If not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen. A second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Velasquez.
Oh, yes.
Yes?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, what were you asking me? I'm like...
We're having to do this by roll call now.
Oh, we have to do this by roll call. I'm so sorry. I was like, I'm sorry, I apologize. Yay.
Yes. Commissioner Banksen?
Aye.
Yes. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
Aye.
Okay, and I approve as well. So with that, we have a unanimous vote. Okay, Edward, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, Mayor.
Okay. Chief McKinley, are you ready to go, or we need another minute or two? Or you want to do it after public comment? Okay. Public comments. Susan?
All right, we have Gary Childress.
Thank you, Gary Childress, 3914 Calendonia Avenue. Dear Uncle Mayor and City Commissioners, we, the citizens of Rock Springs Ridge community, are spending a lot of money in legal fees just to keep our community in a condition that is, after the closing of the golf course, subpar to what many of us originally paid into. I believe that we, the residents who live here, have all been more than generous these many years to put up with the loss of our golf course and repeated violations by its owner, repeated code violations by its owner. However, we will not sit quietly with repeated proposals to turn the green space into more houses. The owner of the former golf course is pushing over a line. The bucolic beauty of our community is being threatened. If housing development occurs on the former golf course, our properties would be devalued with more noise, more crowding, potential drainage issues, and traffic. There is something fundamentally wrong in what is happening to us. This is a breach of a social contract. This is not what my family and I signed up for a little over 18 years ago when we enthusiastically bought our dream home here in this beautiful city. However, we have faith that our elected officials will defend us against this economic and emotional assault, and my family and I reluctantly accept that our community is forced to pay expensive legal fees just to maintain something less than what we originally paid into the community for, a golf course. And as we have always done, we shall hold tight and endure yet another attack on our piece of the American dream, and we shall have faith in our elected officials to do what is right by we, the citizens. We want no rezoning and no land use amendment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Childress. Next up, Susan.
Okay. We have Shaffy.
Hi, thank you. I come here representing my neighborhood, Clear Lake Estates. We seem to be having a problem with...
Need to have an address, please, sir, for the record.
Excuse me?
Your address for the record, please.
2444 Wyndham Bay Place. We seem to be having a water problem arising in that, in Clear Lake, and the retention ponds, I believe, you, Mayor, have been there before. It seemed like it was brought up when Avian Point was being developed, and it just seems like ever since they've been developing, it's rising, rising, rising. It's taken over the playground. Kids can't even go down there and play anymore, and all the rest of the neighborhood, we're getting really concerned about it and wondering if there's something that can be done to it.
I know we've talked with Jeff Weatherford. Let me, you know, we were having flooding issues across the city, and I know that we sent you the YouTube from Jeff Weatherford's, I don't know if you got a chance to look at it.
I haven't seen it, no.
Oh, he was supposed to, Gregory was supposed to send, I thought, everybody from the community YouTube video, kind of outlining other areas of the city that are having flooding problems. That being said, I think when we look at your neighborhood, I think there's maybe two underlying reasons, and we're going to try to get to the bottom of them. One is the ribs, which is Orange County, for rapid infiltration basin. They're off of McCormick. And what's happened is, there were some contracts signed by the city many moons ago, not, no, not that many moons ago, that require us to take on a lot of reclaimed water that we have nowhere to store or put. And so Orange County, to help us with our over, overabundance of water, has been putting their excess water into a rib which is not far from your neighborhood. That's, and this is just, you know, a layman's, you know, idea of what might be happening. So that's one issue. We're now starting to take some of the Orange County water. We were supposed to be taking 2 million gallons a day from Orange County. We were, for several months, Orange County gave, let us off the hook, and they've been putting all that 2 million gallons a day into this, into this rib, not far from your house. So that has absolutely affected one neighborhood next to the rib. The water is even bubbling up in the yards. So that's, it's a little farther away. The second issue that is a little more problematic, I think, is the North Shore of Lake Apopka. Another agreement that was made, we, this was a decade or so ago, is that we were to take water off of Lake, the North Shore of Lake Apopka and put a drainage well that would take the water from the North Shore and put it all the way down in the aquifer. I can tell you, I'm not comfortable with that. So we've got to figure out another way to help that the water levels in the North Shore. And I, and the only reason I say that is, all the pesticides that were on the farms, the last thing I want to do is put them down 1,400 feet into your drinking water. So one, one issue I think we can solve in, not saying the immediate future, and that's, you know, we're building a 300 million gallon storage facility out on Golden Jim Road, but the amount of water that we're required to take from Altamont Springs, from Utilities Inc., and from Orange County is about 15 million gallons a day. So if you take that times 20 days, you've got your pond as full. So we've got some challenges that we're, you know, we're looking to solve if we can, you know, I think if we can get Orange County's water to, if we can take that on, I think that will help somewhat, but we also then need to tackle this, the problem at the North Shore. So two problems. One's a moderately easy fix, the other one much more problematic. But, but understand your concerns and know that we're looking at it, as well as some other lakes in the area that are, that have flooded as well.
That's the main thing, is somebody's looking at it.
Yes.
Because we've been told, oh, well, it was a rainy season. Well, we've been there for 14 years, and we've had worse seasons than last year, and just, it just seems like it's really, really rising, you know, pretty rapidly.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna, I know we're working on trying to take the Orange County water that we've committed to, and, and then we need to look at that North Shore. And I've reached out to the folks at St. John's Water Management and see what we can do to help alleviate that concern as well.
All right.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
You betcha.
We have Kelly Shirley.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm Kelly Shirley. I live at 1885 Boy Scout Road, Apopka. I was just going to make a comment on the, about the ordinance that you were doing down here, the public hearing ordinance on...
Sure.
Changing from, what was it, carpenter companies with the, going from being office area to being...
Well, we really need to, can you, this, this public...
Should I wait for the next time?
Yes, sir, you're supposed to wait. I'm sorry. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I filled out the wrong paper.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll put you when that, when that ordinance comes up, then we'd like you to come up and speak to that ordinance. Sorry about that.
We have David Hoffman.
Good evening, Mayor Nelson and Commissioners. I'm David Hoffman. I live at 3610 Tayside Court, Apopka, Rock Springs Ridge. The title of my comments this evening, I'd like to emphasize, is called "Ten More Reasons to Preserve Rock Springs Ridge." It's a narrative. Over the past two and a half years, no more than a half a mile from where my wife and I live, at Tayside Court, Rock Springs Ridge, there have been 10 homes that have changed owners with young couples and their children moving in. For us, the changeover is encouraging, uplifting. They add vibrance, youth, and promise to our wonderful community. These are families who, no doubt, have taken on mortgages, on desired homes, in their quest to have a shot at the American dream. Owning a home, enjoying a solid middle-class way of life, supporting good schools, saving money over time to send their children to college, valuing their neighbors, freely practicing their faith, and striving for an even better way of life for their children. Since around 1900, the American dream vision and ideal have taken hold. The valuing of the American middle-class culture. On inauguration day, it is worth mentioning that, over time, American presidents, including Presidents Dwight Eisenhower and John F. Kennedy, who passed the torch one to the other on this very day 60 years ago, have invoked the middle class as a tensile strength of our democracy, the best measure of our national security, they had said. Thus, if the middle class is hollowed out, as many economists agree that has been the case over the past 40 years, our national security is compromised, as well as our peace and tranquility, and our fulfillment of the American dream and democratic experiment are jeopardized. When these 10 young families purchased their homes, they bought a product which they presumed featured certain qualities: design attractiveness, value sustenance of a restricted development community, green space, spaciousness, mitigated traffic, and a balanced and attractive identity and character. Like an endless number of consumers, in the American marketplace, over time, they invested trust that their home acquisition, in the context of the community, is what they paid for. But what if they discover that they are being subjected to a shell game? They thought they were getting a certain product when, in reality, they end up getting something considerably less in worth, less in attractiveness, less in community identity and value. Their American dream compromised. I'm going to run out of time here. I have more to say about this, but all I will say is that we have 1,320 homeowners, families, whose home values are jeopardized, their investment over a lifetime. And so we urge you, when the time arrives, to vote to sustain our families by rejecting the proposed zoning change coming forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Susan?
We have Donnie Williams.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Donnie Williams. I preside at 227 North Central Avenue. I am currently the resigning president for the Rotary Club of Apopka, and I have submitted a letter for the Commissioners and the Mayor to review. I'll go ahead and briefly read the letter, so that way we can kind of introduce what we're here for. After consultation with the city and other legacy civic organizations, the Rotary Club of Apopka Foundation has agreed to pursue a development plan in partnership with the City of Apopka. The purpose of this partnership is to revitalize and repurpose the property at 6, or 368 North Park Avenue, also known as the Conley House. The Rotary Club of Apopka Foundation has committed financial, management, and labor resources to make this vision a reality. The property has been dormant for nearly two decades and has the potential to provide a significant value to the community. It is our intent to create a business and event center that will serve the area for decades to come. This project fills a niche between the facilities at Highland Manor and the community center VFW. This property will provide a resource for business meetings, family celebrations, et cetera, while respecting the history and community of Apopka. As a community partner for nearly 95 years, we understand the potential importance of this project. In preparation, we request that the City of Apopka consider the following improvements: demo and debris removal, building engineering and design services, parking lot design and construction, provide access to city water and sewer. We look forward to working with the city and providing the value to the community.
Thank you. Can you tell, you got a couple other members here with you?
Yes, we do. We also have Bill Spiegel here as well, and past president Michael Franklin.
Thank you. Thank you, Donnie. Appreciate that. Okay.
I'm Phil Ryan.
Corey Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Corey Clark, 625 Mount Sterling Avenue, Apopka and Rock Springs Ridge. Up here for a couple reasons. First, I just can't say thank you enough for your help in coming up with a compromise to the sewer line that was going in at the Hammrich Development. It was going to have a huge impact on, on our street and property on Mount Sterling. Just wanted to say thank you so much for that. Mr. Becker, hope you're listening, because you're certainly a part of that. And then I'm up here as well just to, just to reiterate what some of our other neighbors have said as well. We're just very concerned about, obviously, what's being proposed for the golf course. It's my understanding, our, from what I understand, our neighborhood is already overbuilt for the number of acreage that's there to the number of homes. So I'll keep it brief. Just want to say thank you again, and I appreciate your consideration for our concern.
Thank you, Corey. Appreciate that.
We have David Shore.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm David Shore Eyes, 1336 Hillway Road, Apopka, also pastor at First Baptist Church of Apopka. I'm here to speak about a potential opportunity. Eight years ago, when I came as pastor of this community, I was led to have our church embrace the downtown community where there was a lot of difficult situations with homeless and impoverished people. And as we ministered to them, we found that there was a great opportunity to, to see some life change in their lives, and we began to do that. And, but we also saw that a good number of them had no desire to go beyond being helped. And so the church moved towards trying to coordinate group effort of all of our community, the government, businesses, and our churches, and began partnering with other churches, working together to try to meet this need in a way where we could move people from where they're at to where they should be, the ones that will at least try that. And we found that that was very hard on our location, because it's just hard to partner when our name is on it. And so we applied for a Next Step Foundation, became a foundation, and we're a 501(c)(3) now, and we need a location to get started that everybody can work together in and to meet the needs of those that are here. And I'm here just to say that I understand that there may be an opportunity coming up through the city, and we would be honored and blessed to be able to work together with the city in this effort to get a building to get started. And I don't know much more than that right now, just to say that I'm on board, and I believe I can bring other pastors in our community together, that we can meet a need in this community that will bless us for years and years to come, so.
Thank you, Pastor Shore Eyes. Yeah, we've, we've been meeting for, I think, two years now, and I think 18 churches have been, have committed, you know, to coming and being a part of it. So we've got a, a great resource there that wants to make a difference, and so, as you'll see a little later, you know, they would sure like our support and our help. So I know they're not, they're willing to roll up their sleeves and get dirty and help us, you know, make this a reality. So thanks for leading the charge, Pastor Shore Eyes. You've been a role model for a lot of us, so thank you. Anybody else, Susan? Okay, we'll go back to presentations. Chief McKinley? Everybody here that you need to have here? Okay.
Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Banksen. Got a couple presentations. The first, I'd like to ask Ms. Kimarley Pollard to step forward and join me up here. The Apopka Police Department would like to present Ms. Pollard with a certificate of commendation. I'm going to read why we're going to do that. On January 2nd, 2021, while traveling on Main Street, you observed a woman appearing to be in distress with a small child in her arms. You turned around to check on the woman and found only the child. The child was now alone and on the ground near busy Main Street. Without hesitation, you intervened and picked up the child. You continued to care for the child and contacted the Apopka Police Department. On behalf of the City of Apopka, the Apopka Police Department, and the citizens of Apopka, we thank you for intervening and ensuring the child was safe. We appreciate you for getting involved. So with that, we present you with a certificate of commendation. Now I'd like to ask Captain Jerome Miller to join me. Well, he's coming down. A few things about Captain Miller. Captain Miller began his career with the Apopka Police Department on September 4th, 1996. Over the past 25 years with the Apopka Police Department, Captain Miller has held many assignments within the agency and has worked his way up the chain of command, where he currently holds the rank of captain over the Support Services Division. He holds a master's degree in criminal justice from San Houston State University and is a graduate of the FBI National Academy. It is my honor to present him with a certificate of promotion to the rank of deputy chief.
Yay!
Can you say something? I want you to say something. This is your, this is your 15 minutes of, say something. This is like your four minutes of...
Mayor, Commissioners, City Administrator, you know, it's been a long time coming. You know, when I started here September 1996, I had no idea that I would be here at Apopka, you know, this long. But, you know, down through the years, I just had a few people encouraging me and saying, you know, you need to hang in there, you know, the City of Apopka needs you. I said, they need me? They said, yeah, they need you. And, you know, had a lot of help, you know, when I initially started, and one of my training officers is here today, Robert Hippler, who's now an IT director back there. And, you know, he, he encouraged me a lot, you know, he was just easygoing, and he made that transition, you know, for me just that much easier, just to be, you know, brand-new, not knowing anything about Apopka, not from here. And I just wanted to tell him thank you, and, you know, along with other coworkers that I had, and, you know, dating back all the way to Chief Joe Brown, who hired me and brought me here. At the time, I was trying to process to go to Orange County Sheriff Office, and one of the captains over at Orange County at the time said, you know, we got a freeze on right now, but I know somebody over in Apopka, let me call Chief Brown. And the rest is history. But, you know, I'd be remiss standing up here and thinking that, you know, I did this all on my own, which everyone knows, you know, behind every good man is a good woman. You know, in our household, you know, it's been, it's been a little touch and go here for the last, I'd say, the last year or so. My wife just got off the road, just traveled back from Alabama today. We laid her father to rest this past weekend up in Montgomery, Alabama. So, you know, with all, I just appreciate all their support, you know, me going to all these different schools all over the country and different events, working midnights, evening shifts, and I just wanted to let her know, I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Hey, John Perry, you're going to Photoshop me into these pictures, right?
What Deputy Chief Miller forgot to tell everybody, though, is he was at Apopka High School when my son was going through the school, and kept him out of trouble on numerous occasions. So thank you. Thank you for keeping Reed out of trouble at Apopka High School. All right. Good job. Okay. Next up, we've got the consent agenda. Anybody need to pull either one of the items off the consent agenda? If not, I look for a motion to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith.
Oh, we have to do the roll call.
Yeah, roll call. All those in favor. Commissioner Velasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Bankson? Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Becker?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next up, Edward, are you taking on the Duke Energy Agreement?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The item that you have before you, the business item that you have before you tonight, is a closing agreement with Duke Energy Florida and a settlement of the public service tax. If you, kind of, I'll give a brief history so the public has it as well. We've, I've met with all of you, and we've been through all of this topic, and we've briefed on this. I do want to also mention that we have the Duke team here tonight, too. Kari, Chris, and Todd have been instrumental in working through this agreement, and you've met all of them as well. But they're here tonight if you have any other questions as we move through this presentation or with this item. So back in 2016, about two and a half, three years, the city contracted with MuniCode and our attorney, Cliff Shepherd, at that time, to go through the Code of Ordinances and bring it up to par, if you will, with state statutes, minor language changes, names, and things like that. So we went through that process. 2018, that was adopted. Ordinance 2698 was adopted. And at that time, it repealed the cap on the public service tax. So the current public service tax, that is, basically, it is charged on the electric service, the gas service, and the water service today. And it's 10%, and it had a cap of $20. So the state statute does not allow the cap. So during those reviews of the Code of Ordinances, the code was amended to repeal the cap. So we, with our great friends at Duke, we had many conversations, and I say many conversations because we've been working on this item for a while, and so we've had several Zoom meetings to go through this and come up with this agreement. And what the agreement before you does is Duke has agreed in this agreement to a settlement of about $2.9 million for the period January 1 of 2019 through December 31 of 2020. That's the period where the cap was still in place, so we were still having the $20 cap during that period. So, but they have agreed in this closing agreement to that $2.9 million. So with that being said, the ordinance needed some work. So we've done some work on the ordinance, again, working with Duke, because they are the ones who collect and remit this public service tax to us on the electric side. So the ordinance needed a little bit of work. So in your item in your packet tonight, under ordinance in your public hearings, we will bring up the ordinance and talk about the changes in the ordinance. One of the things that is important to remember here is, that's a requirement from the statute, is we have to give DOR a 120-day notice of the change before we can make it effective. So if the ordinance tonight is first reading, it'll have to have a second reading and adoption at another meeting before it can actually become effective, and then it would become effective on July 1 of 2021. So keep that in mind as you go through this as well. So one of the things that we looked at with this $2.9 million agreement or settlement is staff has gone back to the departments, gone back to the last two fiscal years of our budget. If you recall, there were some items in our budget that we weren't able to fund. They weren't in our CIP plan. They were part of our operating and capital for the yearly budgets that we, they're significant items that our staff needed that we weren't able to fund. Some examples you'll see in there are the storage. We talked about a storage facility at the Fran Carlton Center because they needed more storage. Our staff didn't have enough storage for their stuff. This is part of the cemetery. A lot of the area, a lot of the recreation and grounds crew needed some more storage. So that was one of the items. There's some, there was a fire truck, if you recall, that we needed to replace, so there's some funding for that. That list that you see in here, also, as you've heard some discussion tonight from some of the community about a resource center, we're talking about, you know, what can we do to help there? There's a little bit of funding in here, kind of, on that list for that. There's some funding for, you heard about the Conley House, we have that property. What can we do with that property? There's some funding to look at maybe a design or a study of what could be done with that parcel or that property. There are a couple of things in here about ways to maybe pay off some of our debt so that we set ourselves up good for the fiscal year budget coming up. When we get into budget season, if there's the ability to pay off some of these debts, it'll free up some more revenues in the current, and set us up nicely for the FY22 budget. So those are some of the items. I will say that this list is not all-inclusive. This list is more than the $2.9 million, as you can see, but I wanted you to have a list of the items that are concerns and issues that we've been faced with in our budgets and things that we're hearing from the community so that you have that list. I will say, too, keep in mind, you're not approving that list completely, so doing this doesn't approve those expenditures. We will come back to you with budget amendments. So once we get the dollars from the, if the agreement gets approved and we get the dollars, then we'll come back to you with the amendments for these items. So with that being said, I'm here to answer any questions. The representatives from Duke are here to, if you have any questions. So we're asking for approval of the closing agreement with Duke Energy and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Commissioner Velasquez, any questions?
No, we had, I had spent, I think, almost 40 minutes with them, and a lot of the questions that I had were answered. Today, I actually discussed what was on the list. So if we approve this, we'll prove it without that list that's here, that you are providing the significant budget items.
Correct.
That's going to be done separately?
Right.
And will that be in a workshop where we can kind of go decide if this is where we want to put that money?
I think we can do it individually. I mean, each one of those would be a different, you know, it won't be a workshop collectively. We could take up one every commission meeting. We could take up three of them in a commission meeting. So whenever we get to the point where we want to bring up these issues, then we can bring them up.
Okay.
I mean, if a workshop is what you want to do, I mean, Edward, I mean, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, whatever the wishes, the wishes of the council, yeah, whatever you'd like to do, we can do a workshop if you'd like to do that. I think, get the agreement executed, and let's, you know, get the dollars first, and once we get the dollars, then we can figure out how to appropriate them. If a workshop is what you want, we can do that. We can have it as an agenda item and bring it to the council and have discussion on each item. You know, I'd be more than happy to sit down with each one of you as well and go over maybe some of your priorities and things that you see so that we can make sure that we, you know, kind of cover those items, that we can bring them back that way to each meeting.
Well, whichever way you think is appropriate, where it's not so time-consuming, because I feel like when you speak with each of us, and then there's 10 items here, I just thought maybe in a workshop would allow at least some discussion among us.
Sure.
So, I mean, but that's something we can discuss, like you said, after we get the money from Duke. So executing the agreement, you know, I'm for it, but I just don't, I want to be able to say excluding that significant budget item.
Oh, yeah. We just wanted to put a marker out there for discussion. I mean, obviously, it's the council's, you know, wishes as to how we want to spend the money, but we want to start somewhere. So this is kind of, Edward, my list is just, you know, is a starting point, which obviously, you know, it takes the will of the council to approve any of these items, so.
Okay. Well, and I think, Mayor, and I'd like to say one thing, too, that staff, when we put this list together, you know, Mayor and I have worked on this list, but staff, you know, a lot of it's staff, and several things in here, if you recall, were part of our budget process, some needs that we needed in our budget. We just, we didn't have the funding at the time to do those. So this funding allows maybe to be able to cover some of those items, some other needs that we've got that we're hearing from the community, that, you know, there's some dollars here that can help with that. And there's some things in this list also that I think it's important that we think about before we get into budget process. We have a chance here, an opportunity here, to free up some dollars in FY22, when we start in our workshops for the budget in '22, to help free up some dollars so that we, you know, set ourselves up for what, who knows what will happen, you know, with the sales tax. We still have sales tax reductions, and who knows where we'll be, but I think it's important to also look ahead to be, so that we can, if there's things we can do now with some of these dollars, that it'll set us up good for our budget workshops in '22.
Okay. Mr. Bankson?
When do we expect the remittance of this amount? Do we have any idea? Is it going to be one lump sum, or is it going to be over?
It's my understanding it'll be a lump sum payment. I don't know the exact date. Within 30 days.
Okay, you know, as Commissioner Velasquez was saying, and she wasn't here at the time that we were going through all the budget hearings, although you were probably here for every one of them attending, so. But I think it would be good for us to be able to at least look over the different needs that are there and decide best allocation, so.
Sure. Commissioner Smith?
Well, during the one-on-one, I did ask for $5 million instead of the $2.9 million. But I think we agreed and we settled for the $2.9 million. We're grateful for what Duke Energy is doing, being a partner with the City of Apopka, so we appreciate that. And I think that if we could possibly address in the workshop, however, I didn't like the idea of bringing one at each council meeting. That means we'll be here for six months trying to take care of these. So if we could have some kind of a workshop and knock them all out at one time and decide how we want to spend the money, I think would be a better way to do that.
Okay. Good. Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, so I had, like the others, had an opportunity to meet with Duke previously this week, and so I get where we're at, right? We made that the ordinance change back in '18. There was some, I guess, incorrect settlement of those amounts of 1920 to give us this $2.9 million. My one concern was is that they were using actual figures from that time period, so that would not sort of change on the city's side. I got confirmation from Duke that that was the case, so I feel pretty comfortable where we've gotten to on this matter. On the second part of that, and to the rest of the council's remarks already, would love the workshop, but, you know, especially on the resource center, the Conley Building, the welcome signs, the birding park improvements, the other stuff is self-explanatory, but maybe some direction from the parties, whether it's Rotary or the 18 churches that we described, what generally is the concept? Because I don't really have a good vision of that yet. So what are we talking about conceptually before we can get to a workshop environment? So that would be helpful from where I stand, because quite honestly, I got probably four or five emails prior to this meeting asking me for to approve the funding for the resource center, and I don't really know what it's all about, so.
Great, great comments, Commissioner Becker. We just, we had to wait till we got, you know, through this business item before we can, yeah, then we'll start to put, you know, some meat on the bones on these 10 items. So, yeah, I agree completely.
Yeah, so I'm okay.
Good, 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 good. Okay. Business item. I think we've, any other closing comments? Okay. Yes, ma'am? Come on up if you want to speak about the business item. You need to come up and give your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
I'm Bobby Boy, 2317 Boy Scout Road. Got three properties on there. I just wanted to know who I could contact about a neighbor who has filled in a flood zone and blocked off drainage so that now there's seven to nine of us slots that are flooding because of that action.
If you've got a pencil, I can tell you, give you an email address. I mean, I'm happy you can send it to me, but it'd be jayweatherford...
That's another one. Okay.
...at apopka.net. He's back in the back. The guy with the new haircut back there. Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, that's fine. Okay. With that, no other questions. Look for a motion to approve the closing agreement with Duke Energy Florida LLC for settlement of public service tax and authorize the mayor to sign this agreement. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bankson. Roll call vote. Commissioner Velasquez?
I will say aye, but I also want to put in the minutes that the significant budget items and debt reduction, the items from 1 to 10, are not part of the agreement.
Okay, Commissioner Bankson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Becker?
Well, before I say aye, do we have to revise the motion?
Well, it's not a part of the agreement. The agreement's just Duke Energy out. We were just...
Yeah, I just didn't know, I totally get that. I just wanted to make sure it was motioned properly of what Commissioner Velasquez appended to the motion.
Yeah, because the action item, Mayor, is only to accept the agreement and authorize you to sign it. That's all. We're not, there's no other action on the, they're just informational.
Okay, and I say aye, so motion carries unanimously. Great, thank you. Thanks, thanks for the Duke team for coming out tonight. Appreciate all your hard work getting us to this point, and we appreciate working with you, you folks. So thank you. You can leave. Oh, that's right, we've got one more. You've got, coming up next, yes. Public hearing, ordinance number, resolution, ordinance number 2810. Susan?
Ordinance number 2810. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from office to mixed use for certain real property located south of East Oak Street and west of North Forest Avenue, comprising .13 acres more or less, and owned by Carpenter Companies Florida LLC, providing for severability and an effective date.
Jim, any changes?
No changes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this ordinance, number 2810? Is this the one?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Shirley, and I live at 1885 Boy Scout Road. Of course, this really doesn't affect me personally, but...
You can pull your mic up, so you don't have to... There you go.
Oh, okay, thank you. I can't hear myself, so. But anyway, like I said, this doesn't really affect me personally, but it doesn't make any sense to me to make a, go from commercial to residential or mixed use. I think the last time I was here, they were talking about having a residential building there in the office area there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, I mean, to me, you know, making our commercial areas hodgepodge doesn't make any sense to me. If we want to go forward and make our city, you know, better and more attractive to other people to come here, you know, I don't see that we should be, you know, mixing up our commercial... know, mixing up our commercial and residential and into that type of situation. This looks very hodgepodge to me. It didn't seem like it's thought out very clearly. So, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons is, you know, the hospital's no longer there, so it's not quite the office, commercial hub that it, you know, it once was. You know, when we moved the hospital out there and they tore the old hospital down, it, it, it kind of changed the whole character of that, that little area between, you know, the Fran Carlton Park Avenue and the, they got a couple of, a few office, doctors' offices, but that's kind of it. But Jim, you want to add anything to that?
Well, Mayor, I, I just like, see, I, I went out and drove the, the area, and actually, three sides of that block are all residential. And what this piece of property they're talking about, the only thing that's there is a vacant parking lot and some kind of a storage facility.
Well, I will admit, I did not, I did not drive the property. You know, I didn't drive it. I just was thinking of, you know, going from commercial to a residential, just...
It, it's been residential and...
Makes sense to me. I mean, I'd rather see, you know, something go in there, like a restaurant, or something that would be more in line with, you know...
I think pre, you know, moving the hospital out there, I think you're absolutely right. I think, but when they moved the hospital, it changed the whole dynamics. And, I mean, it was a residential neighborhood, that old area between Kitlein Nelson Park and the old hospital was residential. And then, as, you know, we thought it was going to grow there, and then when they, they made the, the move to, you know, to the south, you know, west side of, of the Apopka, that it just changed, you know. So it's a, it's a little less office, commercial, you know, friendly.
Situation, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I said, I didn't, I didn't go look at the property or anything like that. I don't know what...
Get, get a chance, yeah, it's just...
Office Max thinks about it, or anything like that.
Yeah, it's just a block off of, off of Park Avenue. So if you get a chance, just take a look. I mean, that would...
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'd just like to see our community just become better and better planning, I guess you might say. I mean, you, you see all these things that we have around here. I mean, it just doesn't look attractive, I guess.
Well, I can tell you that the Ushler Group has got under contract all of the Advent property, which is, I want to say is a hundred acres, Jim, somewhere around a hundred acres?
Eighty acres, eighty, ninety acres.
Okay. And they're looking to redevelop the whole thing, and it will be a very well-planned out, you know, walkable, you know, residential, commercial, restaurants, the whole kind of gamut will be in that, from Votod up to, what would that be? Is that Magn- not Magnolia One Street?
Oak Street.
Oak, Oak Street, yeah. So I think, we've been working with them for, it's been over a year now, and, and hopefully, they're going to bring, bring, Ushler will bring us back, you know, kind of a, kind of a master plan of that property. So hopefully, that'll get some of the things that you're looking for.
Oh, sure. I, I appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Jim, you got, want anything?
Just, just real quick, yeah, the, the property's only fifty, about fifty feet wide and about a hundred feet deep. So in terms of putting an office there, it really isn't big enough to put in a good office there. And like, and like you had mentioned, there's a parking lot on the west side. It's a bright house building that's on the right, on the, on the east side, and it looks more like a residential structure than it does a really, you know, like a, an office building. And then there's residential to the south. So you're right, it's, it, it, it could behoove itself to that, and if it ever went back to office, at least it's a building that's, that could get reused, similar to what, what a lot of single-family homes are doing in the, in some of the downtown mixed-use areas.
Okay.
But it was an office.
There's nothing there now.
There's nothing. It's a vacant lot.
It's a vacant lot. It, it's never been used, and the, the owner wants to put something there to bring, bring a resident downtown?
I do remember, and I, I did, it was actually something I had discussed today with Ed Bastos before the meeting, because I remember Commissioner Becker was concerned that in the middle of a mixed district unit, we're, we're trying to kind of promote and build for part of our city downtown center, that we would have this sole residence sitting in the middle of this mixed-use district. And it just is, you know, even the gentleman that, Mr. Shelley is saying, it's kind of, it's like something so odd in the middle of, of a district that you're trying to build businesses in, to have a sole residence there.
But that, that particular block, though, three-quarters of it is already residential. So if anything, this is bringing it back into that residential. We do have, all that downtown area is all mixed-use downtown anyway. So what this is allowing that to do is to become a residential structure. It doesn't really, that particular block, it doesn't look too, it won't look that odd.
Okay.
If it was a couple blocks over and on Park Avenue, yeah, definitely.
So does, I don't know who Carpenter Companies is, but do they understand that once that becomes developed, that they're going to be in a mixed district unit?
Yes, yes, that was explained to them.
That their expectations aren't going to be, we have too much traffic going in front of our home, we have people parking in our area?
This was all explained to them.
Okay, so as long as they understand that they're choosing to live in an area where they're not going to have the same rights as a, you know, as a residential community?
It, it was all explained to them.
It's going to be a business community.
Well, the, again, that block is three-quarters residential already.
I know where it's at, but they're, yeah.
And we got the dog parks just to the east, so I think they're looking forward to that type of a mix.
Okay.
I mean, that, this is, this is actually the, the type of a mix that a normal downtown would have on the outskirts of your main downtown. You, you'd have that type of a mix that can coexist.
Okay.
There's no active business right next door to it. That's the big difference, too.
Not right now, no. But that's something that we, as a city, are looking to build in that area.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve ordinance...
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment there.
Yeah, sure, I'm sorry.
But, and, and I totally get that there's already residential there. You know, at some point, you know, at some point in the line, you know, that is, those whole four blocks there were future land use valued to office, right? And that's what all four of those blocks are right now. So all things being equal, if any of those residential change or did any other work, obviously, they would have to go in line with an office future land use. I'd get that piece. And I think the concern about the residential is just more, you know, almost to like what Commissioner Velazquez was saying, we have a residential plot between two non-residential uses right now on that particular subject property. But Jim's point is, well, it's a fairly small piece of property. I would just, you know, try to understand, are you all going to try and approach other people in that area to change the future land use on their properties, or just be reactive at this point, knowing that it's a future or a multi-use or mixed-use zoning classification?
Well, the, the existing uses can stay as-is with the land use and zoning as-is. So if they, if they did want to come back in and, and change their, their land use to, to a mixed use, they could. But there's really no need to, since they already have a, a pre-existing use.
On the other residential properties?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But, but I'm saying is, if, if those people sold or demoed their property and built a new structure on that with the current land use classifications, could they still retain a residential land use, or would they have to build within the confines of the designation of office?
They would have to go with office.
Right.
Or change their land use.
Yeah, but I guess at the end of the day, too, I mean, on one of the blocks, you have a church, right? And I doubt that the church is going anywhere anytime soon. So that's not really what I would classify as an office use either.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm good.
Okay. All right. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2810. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith. Roll call, vote. Commissioner Velazquez?
Commissioner Velazquez votes aye, aye, aye.
Okay, Commissioner Banksen?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Becker?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye, so motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2812.
Ordinance number 2812. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to section 171.044 Florida statutes, the hereinafter-described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Apopka Centerline Development, located north of Boy Scout Road and east of South Binion Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jim, any changes? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Okay, hi, again. This is, I live at 1885 Boy Scout Road, and my name is Kelly Shirley. This, this property here is adjacent to my easement, and so I'm just here to figure out exactly what's going on with it. I didn't really find out more information, and so that, I, that's on me, basically. But, but I would like to find out more information about what's going to be happening in the bigger picture of what's going on.
Jim, you, did you, can you just give me your card and then y'all?
Sure.
Yeah, just real quick, obviously, this is just the annexation. It's the first step in the development process with the Bronson property. Right now, that northern portion will be residential. South of Boy Scout Road, it's going to be a mixed-use product. This will probably be single-family and possibly some townhomes. They aren't, they really aren't sure yet. We don't have any drawings or anything like that for that northern portion yet. The next step would be the land use for this piece of property. The, all the others already have land use, and then the zoning would probably be more than likely a PUD if it's a mixed-use product.
I, I remember he had raised some concerns, because he says his property, he doesn't use pesticides. Am I correct in saying that? Pesticides, no stormwater. So he was concerned with how we were going to develop the property we're annexing, and how are we going to help protect his property?
Well, again, it, it's a, it's a normal process. We go through environmental checks and all, and, and also habitat surveys with, with any gopher, taurus, sand skinks, anything like that for a normal development. The easement, they do have to provide an access back to his property, so that would probably be one of the road systems going back there. We'll, we'll definitely keep in touch.
So he will, he will be kept in the loop as we go along?
Oh, sure, yes, yes, definitely.
And I think that was his concern.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Okay.
And, and my question is, his easement is adjacent to the piece of property we're annexing, correct?
I believe it's on the west side of this property leading back.
Okay, so, so this piece of property is the piece that's covered with pantries?
Uh, yes.
And there's an orange grove on either side?
Orange grove on the north, south, or northeast and west.
Okay, all right. So there's an owner that owns the piece that we're about to annex own those other three parcels as well?
No.
No?
Separate, separate owner.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Bronson owns the other properties on the north and east and west.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number, adopt ordinance number 2812.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. Roll call, vote. Commissioner Velazquez?
And again, Velazquez will vote aye.
Commissioner Banksen?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Becker?
Aye.
And Mayor votes yes, so ordinance number 2812 voted out unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2813.
Okay, ordinance number 2813. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter two, administration, article four, finance, division two, fees, section two dash ninety-eight, fees for copies of documents, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and setting an effective date.
Michael?
Good evening, members of the council. The ordinance before you tonight is basically a housekeeping matter. Back in December, council passed by resolution the new fees for public records copies, as well as the time that is undertaken by a staff to conduct the public records request. What this ordinance does, it goes back into the code. The code, actually, years ago, codified amounts for copies, amounts for, for services. In order to streamline the process, to make things more efficient, it's more efficient for you to be able to, to pass fees by resolution. Still done at public hearing, it's still publicly noticed. But it no longer requires you to go through the entire codification process for fees, which can change based on the, the vagaries of, of basically every day. So what this does, it simply amends the ordinance, it authorizes the council to adopt fees by resolution, which you've already done in December. So this is mere, merely a housekeeping ordinance.
Okay, any questions?
Just clarifying question, this is Kyle. So, I, I get what you said. So basically, the resolution language that we're changing this to just basically says, we have the ability to do so. And then those actual fees and fee schedules that just publicly noted somewhere in City Hall are readily available for the, for the general public? Does that how it works?
That is correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so when, when someone comes in and asks for a public record, whether it's through email, text, or whatever, is a fee schedule sent to them beforehand?
Um, no, they can request, we, they can either request the resolution, or once the fee is given to them, that we address them, that, and they're, they're notified that there, there are going to be reasonable fees. The city has always had the authority to do so. It's been in the code. What we're changing now is the actual amount of the fees is, is done by resolution. A resolution could be readily available to the public. If someone asks for how, what the fees are, the copies, a copy of the resolution can be given, which is what the fee schedule would be for fees.
Will they be able to find that fee schedule on the website?
We may be able to put the copy of the resolution on the website. That's, would be for IT to do. That's something that can, that is possible. It's permitted to do so.
That would be probably more feasible, so that we can direct those who want public records, we can direct them to that website, so that they know beforehand what they're going to be charged and for the records that they're requesting.
Right, that could be done.
Would that be done? Okay.
That could be done. We'll, we'll just address it with, with IT.
Right, instead of sending everyone to a telephone to call someone, it would be easier to kind of refer to them in the website. Okay.
Good. Commissioner Banksen?
I agree.
Good. Okay, all right. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Sure, come on up. Mr. Hoffman?
You guys better.
Oh, Mr. Becker? Any other questions?
No, no, I'm good, I'm good.
Yep, yep.
Just as a citizen, listening to the discussion over this, uh, access to public records, I am confronted with ambiguity. I, I, I don't have a clear view of the purpose of this change, this ordinance. So I would ask for basic clarification. Is the purpose of any change occurring here to expedite access to public records by citizens, or is it intended to make it more complicated? Now, I'm not engaging in any accusatory comment here, but I recall not long ago, in your Orlando Sentinel, an editorial by the editorial board of that newspaper, decrying the efforts on the part of the state legislature to make access to public records more complicated, more difficult, vis a vis more onerous fees. And that has been an issue with that newspaper for a long time. They have pushed back hard against what they see as a trend line. So I note, having come to, attended many city commission meetings over time, intermittently, I've heard public officials here say, we're all about transparency, which makes perfect sense, and for that, you're to be applauded. So for me, then, to make this simple and get to the nub of the issue, is this intended to facilitate, I'm repeating myself, is it intended to facilitate access to public records, or does this make it potentially more difficult? Forgive me for being, my confusion.
Okay, all right. Mr. Rodriguez?
The amendment to the ordinance doesn't change the process and procedures that have been undertaken by this city for years. All it merely does is it just changes the location of the fees there. Instead of it being codified in Unicode, the fees can be adopted by resolution. Resolution can be amended if the cost of doing business increases or decreases. And there is a ease in efficiency in being able to amend a resolution, as opposed to going through the process of amending the code and getting the amendments codified. So what this does is, it mirrors... and getting the amendments codified. So what this does is, it merely reflects in the code that the council has the authority to establish fees, which are established by state statute. So the fees that are in the, in the resolution have to be consistent with what fees are permitted by local governments to charge under Chapter 119. It merely just allows for the more efficient use of your time and energies in if fees need to be amended, they can be done by resolution, rather than it being codified in the code.
Okay.
So, the, the one question that I do have, and I, I understand what Mr. Hoffman is saying. I'm asking for a public record. Now you tell me it's $10 to get whatever records I may want. I can't afford $10. So how does a person who says, "I can't pay those fees," have access to the public records?
No, the cost isn't, you don't have, the cost is only if somebody is requesting copies of the documents. So if someone makes, makes a public record request, which will incur, let's say, just for hypothetical purposes, you're gonna get 50 pages of documents. You're gonna get charged for 50 pages for having to have those printed and submitted to you. If you then come and say, "Look, I can't pay for 50 pages," there's nothing that's prohibiting a person from coming into City Hall and reviewing and inspecting the public records. The cost is for getting copies, so you can take those public records home with you. So you're not, we're not charging you to come to City Hall to review public records. However, if it's an onerous request that requires a staff member to be present, so that someone doesn't go and take public records without any authorization, usually on certain inspections, a staff member is there. We may take into consideration that staff member's time for having to sit and, sit in and, and basically supervise the inspection. But if someone says, "I want to review a certain document," they can come in, they can review the document, and therefore they have, they have exercised their right to, to inspect the public records. If they want copies of it to take home, you're going to, you're able to charge for those copies. If it's something as simple as a few documents that could be submitted by email, scanned in email,
that was my.
Those are cases where, um, if the charges are so minimal, you will receive scanned documents if they're readily electronically transmittable to the person requesting it, then therefore there is no charge for a physical copy of a document if it can be transmitted electronically to somebody.
Okay, that was my next question, which was, if something is available where we can electronically email to them, do we make that, do we make them aware that it's in an email that we can send it to them? Is there a charge?
They're, they're made aware. However, if, the documents can be sent electronically, but it takes a significant amount of time for a staff member to retrieve the documents, in the case of a, a request for all emails from a certain staff member from this date to this date, the time that's gonna be incurred by the IT department in order to be able to review the emails, to ascertain what are the emails that are responsive to the public records request, then to go through those emails to see if there's any information within those emails that is exempt under Florida statutes. Now, when you're looking at a certain amount of time, there's a threshold established by the statute, which, um, once that threshold is crossed, the local government can charge for the time that staff incurs in order to respond to the request. You, the person will be charged for the time, but if the documents can be electronically transferred, you're not gonna be charged a per-page cost for the copies. So it really goes, it's, it really is on a, on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Hoffman, do you understand what he said?
Okay. Why don't, why don't you just reach out to him? You've already, no, you've already had your, your, your time up. If you want to reach out to Mr. Rodriguez, we'd be happy to, he'll be happy to answer your questions for you. Okay? Yep. Absolutely, perfect. Sure, I get it. I understand. Okay, anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a, a motion to approve ordinance number 2813 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. It's a roll call vote. Commissioner Velazquez?
First, I want to say thank you for the explanation, and Velazquez votes aye.
Commissioner Bankson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Becker?
Aye.
And Mayor Nelson, aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and you're welcome.
Yeah. Next up, ordinance number 2814.
Ordinance number 2814. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending Chapter 66 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka, Florida, entitled Public Service Tax by amending Section 66-44, entitled Imposed, Providing for the Levy and Amount of the Tax by providing, by amending Section 66-47, entitled Exemptions, Providing for Agricultural Exemptions, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and Providing for an Effective Date.
So Commissioners, ordinance 2814, earlier under the business item, we talked about the agreement. We have, you guys approved the agreement for the public service tax portion that's coming from the agreement, that's coming from Duke. And in that item, this item, it was clarified that this item would be brought forward. So this is the ordinance, and this is the first reading of ordinance 2814. As you know, and I will, I'll go through real quickly, the public service tax that we currently have has a cap of $20. It is calculated at 10% on electric, gas, and water, 10% of the metered service. And currently, currently we're collecting with a $20 cap on those services. This ordinance, as you know, the ordinance in 20, in December of 2018, that we talked about earlier, repealed that cap, said that Florida statute said that we cannot, you cannot cap the tax. So this ordinance cleans that up and clarifies that, and provides the change for how the public service tax will be calculated. So what I wanted to, so I want to point out the, the significant items in what this ordinance does. So, the ordinance will amend for electric service only. What it does is it taxes 10% up to 5,000 kilowatt-hours. And then any kilowatt-hours after that, 5,001 and above, it will actually be calculated using 4%. So 10% up to 5,000, 4% after 5,001, on the electric side of the service. The gas and the water will be 10% flat across the board for the metered services in that area. One of the reasons that we looked at the, again, with our partners from Duke, we sat down and we talked, had many meetings and talked about what can, you know, how can we, what, what can we do? How can we look at this tier structure and, and come up with, with some, if you will, a little bit of a relief, kind of for our big, large commercial, our large customers, large industrial customers. And one of the things, since we can't cap, the statute won't let us cap, we decided we would put in a, we looked at the, looked at all different types of scenarios. And, and we can give you that information if you need it as well tonight, but we decided that 4%, 4% was, is what actually provided, seemed to provide a little bit of a relief for those large customers. And at the end of the day, most of the, most all of the jurisdictions, all of them that we've looked at with, on the DOR, DOR website, the jurisdictions, it's 10% across the board for all services. So we elected to, to put this cap of 4%, or this tier structure of 4% in, to kind of give us a little bit of an incentive here in Apopka for those businesses, those bigger commercial businesses and industrial customers, and our large customers, to kind of give us an incentive of, you know, maybe bring in some, one more thing that we have that we can put in our little wheelhouse to incentivize for job creation and things like that. Because they will be the ones that will be hit the hardest. Very few of the residential will be hit. We've, the average bill of about 300, you won't see much, you won't see any change. If you have an average bill of $300 electric bill each month, you won't see much change at all. So it's mainly gonna be the larger commercial and industrial that will, will be affected, the biggest impact from removing the cap. So we took that into account when we, when we went through that. The other thing that, that we looked at, or that the amendment does here, is that it creates an exemption on the gas side for agricultural purposes. The statute allows us to exempt agricultural businesses for the gas portion. So we've, this, the ordinance does remove the, the public service tax from agricultural businesses for gas. So, we went through everything and got all of our numbers, and we've met with all of you, I've met with all of you, and we went over, you know, the revenues, the additional revenues that this will generate, and it generates approximately a little more than a million dollars in additional revenue going forward by removing the cap. So, and, and again, if you recall, I said that it takes 120 days, we have to notify DOR of, for 120-day notice before we can put it into effect. So if the, if you, if we, if you adopt the ordinance at the next meeting, at the second reading and adoption, it won't take effect until July 1. So there'll be three months within this current fiscal year that it will have, that it will go into effect, but it will generate overall, an additional, almost additional, one, a little more than, than $1 million for the fiscal year '22. With that being said, in your agenda item, so we've talked about if, you know, this is gonna be an additional revenue that's coming in from, for, for our budget purposes, that I wanted to, staff, you know, we can't, we can't commit to any other, any reductions, because we're going into, we're just getting ready to go into the budget workshops, but this might give us an opportunity where, when we get to budget workshop time, knowing we've got additional revenue here, that we may be able to look at some of our other revenue sources, and one being the property tax rate, to see if maybe we can provide some, a little bit of relief there, because of this, this increase for, and this revenue. Again, it's nothing we can't, we can't commit tonight and say that that's where we're going, but at least we have that. That's one of the things I think we can need to be thinking about. And then it also may help with our merit program for our employees to help maybe reestablish our, our merit program for our employees, recognition of our employees. But, so those are items that just to keep in mind that as we move through the budget process. So, the other thing I do want to say that I think is important for the public is that Duke is going to, Duke Energy is going to do mailouts to our customers, so they're gonna send notices, they're gonna have customer service phone lines set up so that our customers can call in if they have questions, concerns, they can get explanations, they can get assistance. And also, here at the city, we will, of course, be open, so that we can answer any calls that any of our citizens have as well, if we need to explain anything to them. But since Duke collects it and remits it to us, they're going to follow up with the customer service, and we really appreciate all of their efforts with that. I do want to say, another thing I'd like to say is, I know those big customers are getting hit the hardest. And Todd with Duke, those are a lot of his customers, so he will be reaching out to them and meeting with them one-on-one to go over the process and everything, so that they have all the information and, and share everything that we've had, and share our little incentive of how we're trying to, trying to be a good, good partners and with our larger customers and our larger businesses. So with that being said, this is first reading, so we're asking for you to approve first reading and hold it over for a second reading and adoption at our next meeting. I'm here to answer any other questions that you may have. I know we met, so I hope that, you know, we were able to go over everything. And then Duke is here also, if you have any questions from them.
Okay. Commissioner Velazquez?
Again, I had spent a lot of time with them, and, and I was satisfied with all the questions that I had. And, and I appreciate that they were, that, that they are taking on the role of at least seeing the big commercial customers that we have in Apopka. I really appreciate that. So.
Commissioner Bankson?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of questions. What is the average residential usage? Do we have those numbers? Because I didn't find them in my papers.
You need to come on, name and address for the record, sorry about that.
Sure. Todd Kilmeier, Duke Energy. The average residential bill in the City of Apopka is approximately 1,240 kilowatt-hours a month, which would translate into today's rates of $185.02. And the tax that we are discussing for a bill of that size would be approximately $14.22.
And, basically, at that point, if I remember, and I had my papers, and I must have left them in the car, but I think there were over 19,000 that were under 5,000 kilowatt usage, and 52 were the only ones that were over that on the residential side. Is that correct? That's correct. Okay. Okay, so it's, it's mainly those 52 that it will affect somewhat at that point. Again, I, I agree, I think for our businesses, they're the ones that are really gonna feel that. And being the only municipality where we, we actually are offering a greater break for them, as you said, I think that's gonna tend to attract business to our area, which will help our area develop. And will this be implemented in July as well? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Alright. My only main concern, and it's not with Duke, is, is, again, the water bills, they're, that's probably the biggest concern that I get and complaint from citizens, that if there's an increase in that, it's just, you know, we have built-in increases.
It still have to be over the $200 water bill.
Right. So does that, we talked about the electric side, but we didn't really.
And here's, here's my rationale, I mean, Edward and I kind of went back and forth, is if, if what we're trying to do is save water, St. John's is saying, "How do you save more water?" And all of a sudden we're saying, "Oh, don't worry, we're gonna limit the tax on your water." I don't think it looks good that we're, you know, we're being asked to, you know, to put, you know, low-flow, you know, water devices, and then on the other hand, we're gonna give you a discount if you use over $300 worth of water, so.
Well, not, not that there's a discount, it's that there's going to be an increase.
Okay.
But it, again, I don't know if that's gonna affect the average user. If it's not, then it's a moot point.
It doesn't, Commissioner. We did go through, kind of look at some of those numbers. It's tough, but we went through and looked at those numbers, and most of the people that will be hit with the tax, again, it's, it's just like with the electric side, it's those large commercial, those large water users that will be hit with that, that charge. So most of our residential customers, very few of them will be hit with this.
Yeah, I didn't clarify myself, that's, that's more where I was asking, so, okay.
That's it, alright. Commissioner Smith?
Well, during my meeting, I, I was able to ask all the questions and receive the answers that I needed, and my only concern was with agricultural industries, and they told me about the gas tax was being exempt. And so therefore, it's kind of like a wash, wash. So I'm satisfied.
Good, good. Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, I think I'm good with the ordinance language. What I do want to clarify is, you know, the idea that we're not removing the cap for this ordinance. The cap will be removed in 2018. It's just that we weren't, the, the dollars weren't exchanged in hand properly, hence the $2.9 million agreement that we discussed at the, the front part of this meeting. So I want to key in on that topic, right? So, obviously, it sounds like Duke has their processes in place to track it properly on a go-forward basis. I just want to make sure that on a staff level, you know, since we do have a little bit of nuance to our structure, we're not doing a flat 10% across like other municipalities are, we're doing a 4% structure for large business consumers. Do we have people set up on the staff level to reconcile, to make sure that we don't get in a place where we have to get $2.9 million going forward? You know what I mean?
Well, that would be Duke. I don't know that we ever, I mean, y'all want to address that? Somebody want?
Because in the, in the state, in the state law, you know, obviously, we have the right as a municipality to inspect.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence on our side, so that way it doesn't get sideways, you know, where two years from now, we realize we, we had this much in, in billed power usage on the Duke side, yet we didn't get further structure that we have in this ordinance.
Y'all want, I know it's. Yeah.
Chris Teedig with Duke Energy, 205 Echo Hollow Way of Vito. Look, Commissioner Becker, yes, you have got audit rights, so you could just contact us through our tax department. Other municipalities do that, and that's a way to just double-check that the taxes we're collecting are the taxes we should be collecting within the city. So it's, it's a normal process.
And it's not really, and, and there's other instances of this, right? It's, you know, when we talk about our EMS billing, or whatever, whatever relationship that we have set up, we get, we're, we're expecting to get a certain amount back from, on the city level, is that we have kind of reconciliation processes in place on our side to make sure that, you know, we, we get what we're supposed to be getting. That's it.
Okay, alright, thank you.
That process is already in place.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Okay. Alright, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to... Oh, I'm sorry, back up. We got to start you rent.
I just had a question. I'm not sure if it was answered or not. My name is Kelly Shirley, 1885 Boy Scout Road. The question I have is that, are other municipalities in, are we in more competition with them when we do the 4%?
We think it's, it's a, it's an advantage that we'll have over the municipality in the central Florida area, yes.
Like a municipality like to the north or south of us, are they, are they a 4% or are they 3%?
Nobody in Orange County has a.
Nobody's got it?
Everybody's 10% flat.
So we're actually having a competitive advantage? So we're actually having a competitive advantage?
Correct.
Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay, great. I think that's fantastic. Thanks.
And we took care of your ag exemption on gas, so. Okay. Anybody else from the public? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2814 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. Roll call vote. Commissioner Velasquez?
Velasquez votes aye.
Commissioner Banksen?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Becker? Commissioner, Mayor Nelson, aye, all support, so motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Duke. Appreciate your help. Ordinance number 2815.
Okay. Ordinance number 2815. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending Chapter 78 Utilities, Article 2 Water and Sewer Systems, Division 2 Fees and Charges, Section 78 dash 30, dash 51. Sewer tap fees by amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division 2, Section 78 dash 53. Initiation of water service by amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division 2, Section 78 dash 54. Water use charges and deposit by amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division 2, Section 78 dash 54. Waste water use charges and deposit by amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division Sec, 2, Section 78 dash 58. Water and reclaimed water meter reading, recheck by amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division 3. Reclaimed water system, Section 78 dash 91. Connection charges by amending Chapter 78, Article 2, Division 3, Section 78 dash 92. Reclaimed water use charges, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and setting an effective date.
Michael Rodriguez?
All right. Commissioners, this again, I almost repeat myself from the last time I was up here, but this is another housekeeping type ordinance, namely the fees that are established for these utilities, for water, for, for, let's see, wastewater. All of these are in the code, they're enumerated, they're all listed. What this ordinance does is similar to the public records fee requests, is it shifts the matters over to a resolution, which can be amended from time to time for the council. This is being done in anticipation of what is going to be presented at a future date, which is the creation of what is called the distributed water, wastewater systems, which is that hybrid system in order to begin to convert septic systems into a hybrid wastewater system in order for us to come into compliance with the, with the BMAPS, as well as the other regulations. So what this does is it moves the fees that are currently codified onto schedules, schedules that are adopted by, by resolution. There are no changes to the fees. All of the fees are, remain the same. They are just now authorized to be done by council by resolution. This is the first reading of the ordinance. When we, when this matter is presented at second reading, once you adopt the ordinance, which removes the, the, basically the fees, the numbers from the code subsequent to then, and the code authorizes you to adopt schedules, fee schedules by resolution, the resolution, which is going to basically ratify the amounts that are already in the code, move them to resolution, as well as the new wastewater systems will be placed in the resolution for you to adopt. The fees will be enumerated at that point, but there is no proposal to change the current fees. We are moving the current fees in the code to a resolution, to a resolution schedule that is in a resolution, and then adding the new distributed wastewater systems and those fees for those hookups, working with Public Works to establish what those fees will be for that system. So that's the purpose of this ordinance, is another housekeeping ordinance. This also then brings us in line and brings us consistent with other municipalities and local governments that establish these fees by schedules that are adopted by resolution rather than us having them fully codified in the code.
Okay. Commissioner Velasquez, any questions?
You know what? I'm going to have to see him privately, and he'll have to explain that again. But the, the cost of it is that it doesn't change the fees. It just allows, if I'm understanding it correctly, allows us to make the changes through resolutions.
Correct.
Flexibility, yeah.
Right. And now those, those schedules, because what the resolution does, the resolution adopts the schedules. So each of these, each of these uses will have a schedule. So as is proposed in the ordinance, there's a schedule for the water use charges and deposits, a schedule for wastewater use charges and deposits, schedule for the distributed wastewater treatment system use charges and deposits, and a schedule for the reclaimed water rates. Those schedules can be placed on a website, and everyone will have those fees readily available for them to click on the website, and there's our, there's the schedule for these services.
Okay.
So then, if there is a change or change is needed to either increase a rate because circumstances call for an increase, that is presented to you at a, at a public hearing and adopted by resolution rather than by ordinance, which would require the two readings and then codification, and then it'll be codified. So you have one reading, right?
You actually explained it better the second time.
Mm-hmm. You have one reading, done by resolution, adopted, it's, it moves forward.
Okay. Now I understand what you were explaining. Thank you.
Good.
Commissioner Banksen?
Good.
Good. Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, two quick questions. So one, the, for this particular item, do those schedules just apply with what's currently in there in terms of the fee scheduleizes? Because I know when we did the public records, we had passed a resolution previously studying new financials. Did we do the same thing for the water?
It'll, it will be done. That resolution will be adopted after second reading when the code changes, so that we can then trans... So right now, the codified amounts still remain. Once we adopt the, the, after second reading, that the change, the code is adopted, subsequently the next item on the agenda will be the adoption of the resolution with these schedules. We've basically just moved it from the code to a schedule that's on, that's adopted by resolution.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm. And then my second bit would just be, you know, the website's nice. Do we have the ability to, when people are in Unicode, so that they don't have to go to a separate website, i.e. our website, is it possible to upload the fee schedules in Unicode as well? I know, I know we're bypassing the codification process, and it's more efficient, but the resolution itself, so that our fee schedules are there, that way if someone's reading our ordinance, they don't have to go, okay, I've got to go to Apopka City website to look at the fee schedule. Do we have that capability?
Rob, do you want to answer that? So...
Yeah, I don't know if Munich Code will provide a link to, to local resolutions. I know...
I know what he's saying.
They may, they're, they're, that might be an issue that we might need to take up with Munich Code, if we can give them a link to resolutions.
I was going to say, because I, I understand what Commissioner Becker is saying, is someone goes to the Munich, Munich Code, there'd be a link that will take them directly to where the resolution is.
We can check with Munich Code. Now, the likelihood of somebody looking for what utilities fees by going to our code on Munich Code, where I think most people aren't aware that our code is online via Munich Code, I think the likelihood of someone coming to our website first...
The other way around.
Yeah, they go to the...
Is much greater than somebody going to, to Munich Code and then actually going through the entire library of Munich Code to find the Apopka code.
So maybe within our...
I might be, I might be the exception to the rule there. I'm not a weird guy that goes to Munich Code all the time.
I did say that about him. I, I want you to know I did warn about you, but maybe within our website, just a little reference of where it is in the Munich Code. And is that easier for us?
It's going to be on, it's going to be on our website.
Well, the code is already going to reference that the code itself states that all resident, and if you look at the language in the amended code that's presented you before you today, it actually says, says that the schedules are, that there are these schedules, A, B, C, and D.
Oh, okay.
And that they're adopted by resolution.
Okay.
So at this point now, the code calls for schedules, we will be able to put up the actual schedules on our website, so it'll make it actually, to be honest, it might make it easier for someone to go right to the code. Oh, there's the, instead of actually thumbing through that code, because if you actually read through our code...
Right.
It's several pages to try to find what actually is the fee, because service charges are on one page in one section, hookup fees are actually in another section of the code. It's actually spread out in different sections. That's why the wording and language is so complex. Whereas the schedule puts it in one spot. Here are all the water fees. Here are the connection charges, the hookup charges, your rates. It's all in one. So it really makes it much more efficient and clearer for the public to be able to go to one spot right on our website. Here's the schedule for these, these use and charges.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2815 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. Roll call vote. Commissioner Velasquez?
Velasquez votes aye. Aye. I don't know why I say aye.
Commissioner Banksen?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Becker?
Aye.
And Mayor Nelson, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, city council reports. Commissioner Velasquez?
No, actually, you forgot the city administrator report, or we're going through us first?
You're first.
Oh, I'm first. Okay. Okay. First of all, I wanted just to congratulate, here I am, because I did put this down, the firefighters who revoked the firefighter of the year, paramedic Eric Barrows, Barrios, and Lieutenant Matthew Gargone for firefighter of the year. What else did I have? Oh, I attended the Saturday Sounds. It was a very cold night, but it was a great concert. I really enjoyed that. I hope that more of our residents, you know, try and make it out. I know it's been kind of cold on Saturday nights, but there've been really good music out there, good artists, and I just want to keep promoting that. And what else did I have here? Oh, God, I did put some things down. Well, that'll be it for now.
Commissioner Banksen?
Yeah.
Well, I was going to congratulate Deputy Chief Miller, but I'll save that for another commissioner who has kept that on his radar, so...
I know.
But, but we all...
Oh, that's right.
We'll ditto whatever he says there, okay? But yeah, that's, that's really awesome. Long time coming. The trees did get trimmed.
Yes. I was going to hand them on a report.
They could do a little better, but they did get trimmed, so. A couple of things that I have here. Amber Payne, I think we've all heard from her, she mentioned, when I spoke with her, that all the commissioners had responded to her and her concerns. Again, another gunshot issue, and she's already worked with...
Captain Kennedy.
Yeah. And is looking at starting a community policing group there. It just sounds like some real positive there, so I think that's moving forward, and anyway, just wanted to mention that for her. Jean Corin has some long-term drainage issues on Ustler, and he had talked with me several months ago, mentioned that, and I got an email from him. There's issues gone back and forth, is it county, is it city, those different things, but somehow we need to resolve this. He's a very good man, and, you know, has, has kind of gone back and forth. He's done some homework. I've got some information tonight, so do I just get that to you, Edward? Okay, I'll chat with you on that. Other than that, Leadership Apopka is something that the Chamber of Commerce has put together as part of the inaugural class back in the early 2000s. It is a great program, and they extended their enrollment date. So people that are in business, this is something where they'll go with different industries, including the city, and it just gives a lot of information. It looks great on a resume to be part of one of those classes. So if there are any citizens that are watching or here that would be interested in that, contact Joni at the Chamber of Commerce by this Friday.
Cool. Awesome. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say congratulations to Deputy Chief Miller for his promotion, and thanks to the mayor and chief, and to Mr. Bass for listening, and I guess I can take that off my agenda now. But we still want to say congratulations. He has worked very hard and, and proven himself to be in that position, and so we're glad to see him there. I want to say thanks to the fire department and our Apopka Police Department. We had an M.A.K. parade on Saturday, on Monday, and there was an outstanding performance and presence of both the fire department and our police department, and the citizens really appreciated that they had a very good sense of safety with their presence being there, and so we want to thank them for, for their performance and their participation in the parade, and want to thank the mayor and the city councilman, and woman, that participated in, in the parade on Monday, and it was a success, and just as it was with the Christian parade, people were looking for somewhere to go to get out of the house.
Yep.
And so it was a success, and so I want to say thank you.
Well, thanks, thanks for your effort. You, you were a big part of that. Without your, your leadership, it would not have, not have come off as well as it did. So, Commissioner Becker?
Hey, yeah, I'd like to echo Commissioner Smith's congratulations and the rest of the council for Deputy Chief Miller. Well deserved, and can't wait to, to tell that to him in person. Really excited for him. But thanks again for everybody's accommodation of me for this meeting. I've got a bit of cabin fever already, and I'm only six days into this quarantine. I can make it through the next four. I can really empathize with people that are going through the same thing, so everybody stay safe out there. I'm excited too, because, you know, what this tells me is the police department is in good shape. We're about to talk about a finance director, so that tells me that the finance area is in good shape, and so I guess naturally speaking, the next on the radar is our HR director.
That's it.
So I'm hoping to have equal amounts of congratulatory remarks on our next city council meeting to say that that job has been posted and that we're looking to, to fill that as well. So I look forward to that meeting.
Awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Becker? All right. Next up, Edward. Got some good news for us.
I have some great news, I think, here, so. It was kind of, kind of quick, but this is a good thing. So each one of you, I have already met our candidate for finance director, so we're asking for your approval for appointment tonight. Her name is Gladimir Ortega. Ortega? Ortega. I'm going to get that right. I got to get that right. So, so you've all had a chance to meet with her one-on-one, go over her credentials, her resume and everything. You have that in your packet. I'm excited. I've got to meet with, I've been able to meet with her. It's been an interesting process. We had, a lot of the interview was, the interview was done over the Zoom, so kind of an interesting world we live in today, where you do the Zoom and then you meet someone later, and so I'll leave some, she's probably had some information she'd like to share with you and, and everything, but I'm excited tonight, to, to bring her forth for appointment. She has a lot of experience. She has five years with Osceola County Clerk of the Court, or the Clerk's Office, so she's, really, I think she's, she's very bubbly, great personality. I think she will fit very well with our Apopka team, so I'll let her...
And when, when is she going to start, Edward?
Well, that's an interesting story too. Here in Apopka, we've been trying to get to the way that our payroll system works, where I've been trying to start people on, on the first of the pay period. It's easier if we can start you, you know, on Monday, so that you're first of the pay period, because our, it, it, our system, it's just, it's all this proration and everything because our, it, it, our system, it's just, it's all this proration and everything you gotta do, and it just, it can be a headache. But I asked Gladimir yesterday, I said, "When do you want to start?" And she says, "Well, I can start now." And I said, "So like, if they ratify you on Wednesday, will you be ready on Thursday?" And she's like, "Yep, I can come on Thursday." So, we're going to have to do a little proration and figure all this out, but she's going to start if you ratify.
She's going to have to figure it out.
Reporting for duty at eight o'clock in the morning, so.
Oh, all right. Gladimir, come up.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Gladimir Ortega, and I'm a resident of Clermont Lake County. Um, I've been doing accounting for over twenty-five years, so don't let the face, you know, lie to you. I am old. Um, and I work for different industries. I worked for Timeshare Industries. I worked for nonprofit school in my younger years, and most recently, I worked five and a half years uh, during Armando Ramirez Clerk of the Court. And most recently, actually, the past year, was nominated the Clerk Comptroller for Mr. Ramirez before election came in and, you know, change of management came in. So I've been doing that job training for the comptroller position, and then, you know, I lost my job there. But I was fortunate because I got a job in Lake County, in the city of Apopka. And I was blessed to meet Edward and uh, give good references. I guess people still like me out there. And so I'm very, very happy, very excited to work for the city of Apopka and make sure I can believe, bring clarity, clearance, and financial statements to you to report as needed.
Good.
Any questions for?
No, we, we all had the pleasure of meeting her, uh, one-on-one, and uh, I was super impressed.
Thank you.
You know, I know a lot about Osceola County, because I do know some of the people there. And uh, she's very data-driven, which is good. Um, she's going to meet her match with Commissioner Becker. So, welcome, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to working with you.
All right.
Yes, and, and I echo those sentiments. Uh, I enjoyed the, the varied background that you have, that you're not just a number cruncher, but you really do bring in just different aspects to what you do. So just a, a well-rounded professionalism, and, and I'll bet Commissioner Velazquez pronounced your name correctly.
Yes, she did.
So, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Smith?
I want to say welcome as well, and I've met her upstairs, and she has a very outgoing personality, and I love that, because I'm a people person. She's very sharp and quick.
Uh-oh.
All right?
That's it.
So uh.
You need to tell her the story.
So, so we, we welcome you here, and uh, I understand you're going to be starting on tomorrow.
Yes.
To work, and you're going to be moving on when?
Uh, let me see. When am I moving?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I mean, in, in many respects, I mean, obviously the finance director position is probably the second most important job in the city, right? Behind HR Director, who managed to solve our human capital. You know, our, our financial capital is, you know, really in, in great respects, all of our, the most important job that we do as a city. We're all, you know, financial stewards of our taxpayer dollars. So I did have the chance to talk to Gladimir this afternoon, um, and you know, what gives me some, uh, some comfort is, you know, a lot of what we pride ourselves here in Apopka is that we typically have high remarks when we do budget preparation. We typically have high remarks when we prepare our annual financial statements. Sounds like she has a good experience doing that, uh, with the places that she's been, most specifically the, the Clerk of the Court, being a government organization similar to ours. Um, to Commissioner Velazquez's point, yeah, but naturally I devolve into data geek conversations, naturally with people, um, and it sounds like Gladimir is of that same mindset.
Yes.
I actually had a chance, uh, you know, similarly, I, I had some background working at the Clerk of the Court's Office, and we had a common, uh, reference point, so I was able to, to contact my contact over at the Clerk of the Court's Office, and um, had, had high things to say about you as well, so.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you, um, and uh, much success to you.
Thank you, sir. I'm here to do a good job, I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody from public wish to speak? All right. Look for a motion to approve Gladimir Ortega as the new finance director.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Uh, second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. Roll call vote. Commissioner Velazquez?
Commissioner Velazquez, aye.
Commissioner Bankson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
I don't know why I keep saying A.
Oh, Commissioner, Commissioner Becker?
Aye.
And Mayor Nelson, aye, so unanimous vote. Uh, Commissioner Smith stepped out. Okay. Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you.
You are, congratulations. See you in the morning.
Yeah.
All right, I'll be brief. I um, had copies made and submitted to each one of you, and I emailed Commissioner Becker. Um, one of the things I did in my previous post, and I want to bring it to the city of Apopka, which is to keep track of the bills that are currently pending. It's, it's, it's that time of the year, it's the silly season where the legislature gets together and tries to do some busy work. And by busy work, I mean, uh, I listed those bills that will have, um, impact on the city. I will be tracking them and reviewing them, and then once, um, there is, they will be adopted, I will prepare a legislative report summarizing the bills that have been, that have been approved, that have an effect on the, uh, the city and its, and its services. So I wanted to provide you currently, that is based on a review of all the outstanding bills that are currently pending and their current status. Uh, it's a brief summary of what the bills are, and these are the, um, the ones that likely have an, it will have an impact on, uh, the city's day-to-day business. And as you can see, some of them, again, I think it's the, the current, uh, trend of the legislature, which is to try to increase the amount of preemption to take certain home rule powers away from local governments. That's kind of a bugaboo of mine from county days, and I think of bringing them to the, to the cities as well. But if there are any other issues that you become aware of, or you'd like to highlight, um, feel free to please let me know, and I will include them in the, um, in any report. Aside from that, that's, I'll really have to report now unless you have any other questions.
Any questions? Okay.
No, thank you for preparing the list. This is great.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Well, I'm on a, I've got a, I got a big list, so we're going to be here a few minutes. Um, gosh, uh, well, why don't I just start out with the legislative update? Um, you know, we've got the, the, the three items that we've kind of all agreed to as, are kind of our priorities. And so I just want to give you an update on those. Um, Harmon Road extension. Representative Truenow has agreed to sponsor in the House. Senator Baxley has agreed to sponsor in the Senate. Fire Station Six, Representative Brown has agreed to sponsor in the House. Um, waiting to hear back from Senator Bracy on, uh, Senate sponsor. Uh, Wakava Springs Recharge Flood Protection. We've all talked about Border Lake in that area. Um, waiting to hear back from Representative Plaken. Senator Broder, uh, has agreed to sponsor in the Senate. So we're, hopefully have these in the next week wrapped up as to, you know, sponsors, and then we start, you know, working on, um, you know, getting them through the legislature.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you, the Harmon Road is, uh.
Truenow and Baxley.
Um, Baxley.
Fire Station Six is Brown and Bracy.
Okay, Brown and Bracy.
Bracy is not agreed yet, and then Wakava Springs, the flood protection, is Plaken, who's not agreed yet, and Broder, who is agreed.
Okay, so, okay.
Okay. Um, next up, I want to give a big shout-out, uh, the Building Department. Uh, they came in Saturday and Sunday. We've gotten behind. We had a little COVID issue, and, and you know, we're building, going crazy, and uh, they came in and just on the weekend billed over seven hundred thousand in impact fees. So this week, they've, they've generated a million dollars in impact fees, so, well, congrats to our, the Building Department for, you know, making it happen. So we really appreciate their hard work. Um, next up.
Can I ask you a question regarding that?
Sure.
Because I did go up to the Building Department. I had a question for them. Um, and I, I did ask them this question. Um, are, are we looking at any time to do a software?
Yes.
So that we can eliminate?
We are.
And kind of streamline?
Next three or four weeks, we should have it.
Yeah, streamline, okay.
Okay, um, next up, the Apopka E D C website. Uh, I know that Stacy and I, and, and the I T team, Rob and Bob, uh, looking at that, and Kelly, um, looking really good. We're, we're projecting a February seventeenth presentation to City Council. You're going to be impressed. Um, we've got kind of a, you know, the snapshot of where, what it will, you know, ultimately look like, so I think you'll be really, really happy with that. Okay, next up, want to just make sure everybody's good with, uh, in your packet. You should have, um, our, our team at REC, um, came up with this, the classes and the, how we want to do them. If, if what we've done is we've moved a couple of the bigger ones, which are the Zumba classes and Senior Cheer Exercises to the V F W, to give us more room for spacing them out. Um, obviously, we either vaccination or mask, um, you know, that's, so we're trying to accommodate everybody's wishes. So if you've got any, would like to get kind of a, kind of a head nod from everybody that this is something everybody can live with. Uh, we're, we're hoping to implement this, uh, as of February first.
I'm, I'm virtually the head nod. And, and the positive, up and down?
Yes. Positive is up, negative is down.
Did we, did we do, I remember you were saying the V F W was under renovation?
Correct.
With new rugs. Did we do that already?
It will be done by February first.
Okay.
Yes. So is everybody good with this? Okay, so got it.
Absolutely.
Head nod on everybody. Commissioner Smith?
Kind of open up for business and let our seniors.
I guess, they're doing Zumba at the Building and Community Center, so that, that's going to move to the V F W as well?
The Zumba, yeah, because it's, it's a big class.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, we're, the only reason we're moving these two items to the V F Ws is to be able to space people out where they can, you know, feel more comfortable. And then, as soon as we get, we feel that we've made progress on COVID, we would go back to the, the way it was, original.
All right, just want to make sure I set my wife to the right place.
You got it. Okay, so it looks like everybody, uh, Commissioner Becker, you in agreement? Good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, awesome. Okay, good.
Perfect.
All right, let's see. Um, next, COVID nineteen updates. You got the numbers in front of you. You know, it's just been a bad couple of weeks. Um, so just take a look at that. I want to, uh, let you know, we, Chief Wyllam and Captain Sanchez and I went out to Orange County to see the vaccinations. And so just like, just kind of recap, you know, last week, or last commission meeting, we talked about, we'd have twenty paramedics that are now, um, licensed or whatever to, to, to give out the vaccines. And so we went out there to, to find out, you know, how, how it's being run. And so very impressive, um, the, the checks and balances, the, the, they've really got it down to a, to a science. Um, they had seventeen different positions, and they were doing a couple thousand a day. So we're, we're really pushing hard to, on D O H and the Orange County to let us, um, we've got a plan. Uh, Chief Wyllam's got a plan to be able to do it around, at the V F W. We could put in two stations, which would, with, with four paramedics and, or excuse me, yeah, four paramedics and two, uh, office staff, we could do up to two hundred and fifty vaccinations a day. So we're, we're really trying to, to get to the point where we can do that. Interesting enough, though, that, one of the logistical problems we were, you know, I think we were all kind of worried about is that the Moderna and the Pfizer is at twenty-one days, Moderna is at twenty-eight days. And so we, what we would request from Orange County and the D O H is that we only, we get one or the other, because the logistics of figuring out Moderna versus Pfizer on the booster is going to be a challenge. But we feel real confident, if not next week, the following week, that we'll be up and running, because what happens is next week, Orange County then starts the booster vaccinations for Pfizer. And so now they got to, if they want to bring in new people, they've got to also take care of the, the first group, which, you know, needs to get the booster, because the booster, the, the initial vaccine is fifty percent effective. The second booster makes it ninety-five percent effective, so they've got to get that second shot in their arm. So we said, you know, when they get to that point, they've got to obviously take care of the booster folks first. And so I think there'll be a lot of opportunity for us to kind of fill in and help, help them. And so it's interesting, as we're riding home, we found out that the, the company was charging five dollars to, to administer the paperwork and the, the, the flow of the vaccinations. So I called a good friend of mine in Tallahassee, "Hey, you know, I think it's, it's, it looks like that might be more than an Orange County is going to, can afford, because it's coming out of Orange County's pocket." And he said, "Yeah, let me see what I can do." And so, uh, an hour later, the magical price went down to two dollars. So we, uh, we feel like we'll be able to get, you know, some, some help, um, you know, obviously from the, the state or the feds to, to be able to do this. But regardless, I mean, we as a city, I mean, if, if there's nothing we, more important than the health of our citizens, if, if, um, if we've got to dig into our, our reserves to, to, to vaccinate the people that, that need and want to be vaccinated, we're going to, we're going to make that available. So hopefully, within the next two weeks, we'll have the, uh, the go-ahead, green light from D O H and, and Orange County to, to start vaccinations here at the V F W. So real excited about that, um, and, and.
Does, does, do the vaccinations need like a special, special storage?
Yes, they, they will do that. They, the way it would work is they would bring us out every, every morning. They would bring us out.
Oh, they bring it out?
A dose, you know, two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So, um, hats off to, you know, the, the Department of Health for, for their, you know, they've really got this thing humming, and uh, hats off to our fire department that are ready to go and just waiting on, uh, D O H to give us the green light. So thank you.
And is, is there any conversation to, um, kind of put, you know, the elected officials on that list?
I'm not going to do that, but.
No.
Um, unless you're sixty-five. If you're sixty-five, then you would qualify anyway.
No, I'm, I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm not telling.
We, we know one that might make that.
We aren't calling any names.
No, I wouldn't do that. Okay, so that's for the COVID updates.
Okay.
Um, two other items. One is, you know, it's been several months ago that we, we put under contract the water company, and to look at our, uh, we were having water losses approaching eighteen percent, and couldn't figure out where all the water was, was going. Is it leaky pipes? Is it, you know, whatever? Well, in two and a half weeks, we have now found twelve thousand dollars a month in revenue. So they are, they are earning their, their, their keep. Twelve thousand a month, so.
Where, where was that?
Where was it?
Yeah. We've got accounts that weren't, uh, weren't even on the system. We had accounts that were, we were charging water but not sewer. We've had accounts where, commercial accounts where we have, meter can do one, one X, ten X, or a hundred X. They were set at one X, and it should have been ten X. So we had two accounts that went from, from three hundred a month to over almost four thousand a month. So they're, they're, I don't know how they're doing, I don't know how they're finding them, but I'm telling you what, they are, they are, they're working hard for the city of Apopka. So, uh, hats off to the, you know, that, their team, and, and, you know, because right now, we're in the rate study. And so if we find this, these, these dollars, then it reduces the rate that the rest of us have to pay. So it's, it's, you know, we're trying to get this thing going as quickly as, as we can, so that when we come up for the rate study, that we'll have additional revenue to offset, you know, the, the wastewater treatment plant that we just, we just, you know, opened. Anyway, pretty exciting. I, I was really happy. Now for the last one, um, wow, what an interesting call. So this has been about, uh, today is Wednesday, was it Friday? Thursday or Friday of last week, I got a call from Dan Wilcox, who runs the Central Florida Y M C A. And the Y M C A, like a lot of gyms, which is a lot of what they do, or gymnast, you know, or, or, uh, fitness centers, um, they have been, uh, their revenue has been cut by two-thirds in the last, um, since COVID hit. So he calls me just to, to inform me that, hey, um, we're going to have to, to sell, uh, Camp Weewaw. Said, "We've got a buyer ready to, to purchase. We, we've got a, we've got some debt covenants. We've got to meet, and it's just something we've got to do, we, just to survive." You know, they've just gotten rid of, of their aquatic center on International Drive, sold that to Harris Rosen. And I said, "Whoa, whoa, 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 what? You're going to sell it?" I said, "I said, 'Well, I've got a council meeting on Wednesday night, that I would at least like to bring it to the city's council attention, and to see if, I mean, how many people, how many of you have been, have been to Camp Weewaw? Commissioner Bankson, never been there? Commissioner Velazquez?
No, I've passed it, but I've never been inside.
Anyway, unbelievable facility that, um, you know, we, we had talked about, I know with, with Brian Foreman from the REC's department, you know, we were talking about putting some fields out there off of Harmon Road for, you know, some, some recreational facilities for the southwest part of the city, which is, you know, growing, as we all know, growing relatively fast. And so I thought, well, what if we could swap the land we have on, on Harmon for this land here at Camp Weewaw? As you can see from the map, all the, the facilities they've got, um, they've also, I gave you the financials. Obviously, that's based on no debt, but, so I'm coming to you, um, as a former Camp Weewaw in, as well as Edward Bass. We, we both went there as, as youngsters, and, um, back then, it was, it was a Boy Scout camp. So, you know, I'm, I'm coming to you for, if, if we get enthusiastic support, then I'd like to move forward. I mean, obviously, they're in a, in a, in a pretty big hurry to, to get something done. They're either going to sell it and develop it into, into houses, or we're going to figure out a way for the city to buy it and, and turn it into a, a city park. Obviously, it's on two lakes, so you'll be able to canoe. They say it's swimmable. I'm not so thrilled about swimming in that lake. Yeah, no, I got a, got a head nod. No, it's probably not swimmable. So I, I, I gave you that. Also gave you, uh, the, the center director. He, he got hired in January before COVID hit, and so Y M C A has kept him on this whole time, thinking that the COVID would, would go away and, and we would be back to normal. So looking for, um, input, um, whether you think it's something, you know, obviously, it's, it's, we're talking in the range of about five million dollars. Um, we've got twenty-three acres on one side of, of Harmon Road, and we've got eight, a little over eight acres. acres on the other side of Harmon Road. I don't know how all those numbers work. We also have about $800,000 in, in impact fees, recreational impact fees, available if we wanted to do something. So I'm just, it's kind of a now or never and, and just want to get the city council's temperature on the, the issue and whether it's something you want us to, to move forward with, at least negotiate. And then, you know, if, if it's something I'd like to move fast, obviously we'd need to get appraisals and we'd have to come back, obviously to city council for a couple of, couple of hearings to approve if that's something we want to move forward with. So Commissioner Velazquez?
Oh, I get to go first. Kind of make a decision. I mean, this is a big investment for the city of Apopka, but I understand the sentimental attachment to it. And obviously if they do sell it, I mean, I don't like hearing that they're going to turn this into residential. You know, I, I'd like to have more information because, I mean, right now, you're talking about swapping, you know, land for it?
Vacant land, yes.
Vacant land that we have?
Yes.
And do we know the value of that vacant land?
No.
So if they're looking to sell right away, I mean, this is a process that's, that needs to be at least a discussion where, you know, how much is it really going to cost us at the end? And not even cost us to, to take it, but then how do we maintain it?
Well, that's, the, the, the financials are in that.
I'd like to have, to be able to review this more to understand it. I, I, you know, I don't, I don't want to say yes or no, but I'd like to have more time. I mean, if you can make time for me, Ed, certainly I just don't want to say, go ahead, let's do it and, and not realize the cost and, you know, even the process. I just, you know, I, I'd like to have more time.
Commissioner Banksen?
Yeah, I think if it's a feasible path forward, it's definitely a worthwhile goal. This is one of those things that you can't recreate. If we lose this, it, it won't happen again.
Right.
It, it just goes away. And so I, I just think this is something that we need to do what we can to aim at. But as you said, we, we need to make sure the sustainability of handling it. You know, if someone gives you a, a castle, but you can't take care of that castle and end up going in a disarray. So I really am for pursuing it. I, I think we, we need to hang on to this gem.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
I would like for us to pursue and see what it is that we can do in order to obtain the property and get the appraiser done and appraisal on the land. We're talking about swapping and maybe there won't be any cash exchange.
That, that would be, that'd be great. I mean, that's, I mean, that'd be my goal and that was, you know, I just, there's some property right next to our eight acre piece that he has under contract and he's got 12, almost 13 acres and his contract price was 3.5 million dollars. And so, I mean, so if you kind of do the numbers, we might have enough where it's, it's an even swap.
Right.
You know, and, and obviously we're a city, we can't just, we got to go by the numbers. Whatever the appraiser says it is, it is, on, on the buy side and the sell side.
Correct.
But one of the things I, I wanted to bring to their attention, to YMCA's attention is that they've got a lot of history and a lot of, if, if you go out there, the Kiwanis Club has got four, five, six buildings that they put their sweat, equity and financial resources to build. So they've got some, you know, they, they would have a PR problem if they sold it for development. So I think we've got a little leverage, I wouldn't say a lot, because I mean, obviously they've got a bank breathing down their neck that they need, you know, need to be paid. But I think it's, it's an opportunity for us to save face for them, obviously give us a great, you know, facility that, you know, you, there aren't any of those around for sure. So to your point, we can, yeah, I'd be happy to, here, here's what I'm asking. And Commissioner Becker, I'm sorry, let me, let me pick you up.
Yeah, so I apologize, the Zoom cut me off for a little bit there, so I was watching on YouTube instead and I, I got a little bit of a lag. So can I just repeat, I think what you said?
Sure.
What I didn't catch was where the swap target would come from.
Yeah, we've got two pieces of property on Harmon Road. We have the tower site and we've got, and we've got the, the piece across the street.
Okay. And so when we, and I thought that I heard you say something about $5 million valuation?
Yeah, that, that's a kind of a preliminary, that's their preliminary number on their property, yes.
And then would the intent be, so they, I looked at that, the financials they sent over, so they've got like, just shy of 1.7 in gross assets. Is that inclusive of the land or is that just assets on top of it?
I think that's assets on top of the ground. Yeah, they've got, you can see the number of buildings, like their, you know, the, their mess halls probably, probably four, 5,000 square feet. They've got, you know, all their, their bunk houses and the, I would, I'd have to guess they've got two, two residences on the property. So
And then would, would the intent be to operate it as a camp like it is now? Like we, we assume the operating costs and all that sort of stuff or is there a different intent?
That, that would be my, you know, I mean, we can, obviously we can adjust it. One of the things that, that Brian Foreman is, he's not, he's not a real fan of overnight camping, obviously, you know, the liability that comes along with overnight camping. Maybe we get rid of that and move something else in there, you know? So I, you'd like to, you know, the numbers we've got are based on the way they've always run it. So, I mean, could we do it more efficiently? I, I don't, maybe, maybe not, you know, but I at least, you know, I wanted to put some numbers, they gave me these numbers just so we've got something to look at. And so it, it looks like a break even. Obviously you've got the big capital costs up front, but it's, it's close to breaking even.
Yeah, because I, you know, $5 million valuation would put it at five times multiple of their, of their net, of their gross revenue. Their margin looks like it's 87,000 for the 2019. So the multiple gets pretty high when you just look at it from an earnings basis. But, I mean, I, I, you know, I like the idea. I think it's a pretty, you know, anytime that we can get a park asset like that, it really kind of skies the limit with programming that you can do out of there. I think it's, it's worth exploring further, for sure.
Okay. Commissioner Banksen?
I'm not sure where we're at on the FBO, on the sale of that, but I don't know if there was, those revenues were already earmarked a different direction, but that would be something that maybe
And, and Sandpiper.
And Sandpiper. Those are, yeah, we can look at all of those uses.
Yeah.
If that, if that's the direction.
And here, so I'm, I'm, I got three pretty definites and one kind of a maybe, that Velazquez, kind of a maybe?
Well, the maybe is only because at some point, they're willing to take the land swap?
Yes. Well, because it's, they save face by, by doing a land swap. If, if you've got all these groups that have, have act, put blood, sweat and tears into that place, including Lockheed Martin, they built, there's a building out there that Lockheed Martin built. There's four or five, at least four or five buildings that the Kiwanis Club, I guess of Orlando, I don't know where, have built out there. So there are a lot of people that invested their time and treasures to, to make Camp Weewah what it is. And so I think the YMCA has a, not an obligation, but I think push comes to shove, they would much rather us take it over so they, they don't lose that, that, the donor base they've got, they don't lose them, you know, because of, it's now houses. So I think by maintaining what we've got, that it, they're able to maintain some, you know, relationship with their, with their, their donors.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to explore it. I just feel that at this time, I mean, we're already kind of, you know, our services have been very slim and we're, we're really in a tight budget. We've got all this and now we're, we're kind of jumping into the water to invest. And I understand that because I, I truly believe, like Commissioner Becker said, this is a park that you don't want to give up because once it's gone, it's gone. But I'm, you know, I have just, just some concerns about, you know, what our financial investment is going to be in it.
Yeah.
That's it. I mean, but once you come back with the appraisals and it's, it's going to be sort of a swap and our investment is not going to be an, an extraordinary amount. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to explore whatever we can do to save Camp Weewah. Maybe that, if that's what you're looking for, that's what
Well, I mean, it's, right, it's absolutely, I mean, I would love for Camp Weewah to stay there and under YMCA's control. That's not going to happen. It will either be bought by the city of Apopka and kept, I would imagine, as, as a park or it's going to be houses. That's the only two choices.
Is there any way for us to get private partnership with us? I mean, or, or is it, is the timeframe that we won't be able to do that?
I mean, I think they, they're more than willing, I think, some of the programs, if they wanted to use Camp Weewah, would I, would we be willing to partner with, with YMCA? Absolutely. I mean, I don't, you know, we, we want to try to get it to break even, but we want it, you know, we want to be able to, to utilize the facilities, you know, to their, to their highest and best use. So that's definitely a
Yeah, and I think, you know, as, as you're exploring the land swap opportunity, if it's a, if it's an even trade in terms of, of, you know, Camp Weewah existing operation assets and land to the land that we, we put forth, I guess the only other thing to just make sure that we're aware of is what the capital, capital commitment would be to, you know, I don't know how bold those structures are, what the cost of capital improvements, that sort of stuff, so just keep that in mind.
Yeah, I had, I took Brian out there and also took Joe Crisafoli out there to take a look and there's some wear and tear, there's, there's some buildings, you know, could use a roof for the next five years. Overall, it's not in bad shape. They've, they've had a caretaker there for the whole year. He's even added a few things to, to make it, you know, better. So it, it's not in horrible shape. It could use some, some tender loving care for sure.
So the next question is, is how, how much time do we really have?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll say this, if, if you want to, you can get with Edward, I, I know that we, we've got a phone number for the, the lady who's kind of running that part of it from the, for the Y. She'd be happy to let you, you know, they can meet you out there in the afternoon. One of the, their, their managers lives in Apopka, so what he would do is he'd come from downtown Orlando and meet you if you want to meet late in the afternoon, he could just meet you at, at Camp Weewah to show you the facility.
Sure. I've passed it a million times. I
Oh, it's, it's, oh, it's, it's unbelievable.
To go in there.
Okay, so here's what we'll do, if we can, everybody get a chance to take a look at, at that and then we'll bring it back next council meeting. I'd like to, I mean, I, I don't want to hold them up. I mean, they, they're literally, the wolves are at the door. So we can't, I don't want to hold them up. They've got, they've got a, a willing buyer today, so they're, they're not, you know, they would love to work with us, but, but I, I understand they can't, they can't wait. So if we can, so I'm, three and a half, maybe, three and a half votes, four and a half votes? And then we'll, we'll, so we'll bring it, I'll, I'll let them, I need to, because I need to call them tomorrow morning and let them know that we're, we're, we're more than lukewarm, but we're not hot.
Yeah, and then last question, not to belabor the point there. If, if the valuation on our property comes back where we're kind of upside down to our favor, meaning our land is more valuable than what they're asking, do we have the ability to subdivide any of that property with us to make it, to make it work?
I would think anything's on the table and it's like there's some, there's some lots, I don't know if you remember on, if you go down Benyon Road, there was a, a road that was built on the, so if you're going south on Benyon, there was a, there was a little road right before you get that first neighborhood on the pass Camp Weewah. And so you could, you could even sell, there's probably six, eight, 10 lots that you could, you could, you could sell off those because they're not really a part of the Camp Weewah experience. So you could, you could even sell those off to reduce the price, you know? So I think all those things are on the table. I think we all, you know, obviously I don't want to, the, the last thing I want to do is come out of pocket for, with $5 million to buy it, but I, but I think we've got some options that, that we're, we're swapping land, you know, hopefully, you know, dollar for dollar and we don't have to come out of pocket for anything. And then all we need to worry about is trying to figure out the operating side of it. But, you know, I just, I just think it's, it's, it's an unbelievable, it's a once in a lifetime opportunity. Would I like to come October or in, in July or August when we're in budget, you know? But it isn't, it, it is what it is. And so with, with that, I, I will, I will take it back to the, the board at the YMCA tomorrow. And what I would, I would ask is that everybody go out, take a look, we'll have some, you know, whatever questions you need, ask Edward and we'll, we'll try to get you answers on anything else that you need. And then I think what we'll probably need to do, Jim, is if, is, I will let them know we probably need the appraisals. I think, and, and maybe we get with the Y and we get the same, use the same appraiser? I don't know if that makes sense or not makes sense?
Yeah, we, I'm just thinking, we, our property to get the appraisal would probably be about two to three weeks.
Okay.
The Y property because it's multiple buildings and multiple, there's actually two different land uses on
Can you come up?
Yeah. Sorry.
Thank you.
So our property would probably take about two to three weeks to get the appraisal on each of those properties. They're, they're vacant, so it's, it should be pretty, pretty simple. The Y property is a little bit more complicated because there's multiple buildings, multiple uses, and there's two different land uses on the property, but that would probably take a little bit longer. I can talk to Danny and find out how long it would take.
But see, I don't, if it's going for residential development, it's only worth what? It, it's almost, the buildings are almost a negative.
Yeah.
So I don't know that's going to be a
They have to tear those down, yeah.
Yeah, a couple of the negatives for the property are it's, it's on septic tanks, which we'd have to get rid of those. And also it's on well water, which I was amazed that it's well water. So we, those are two things, I know we'd have to upgrade, we'd need to go to sewer, which, which is right there on Benyon.
Yep.
And we'd have to go to city water relatively fast.
That, that was kind of going to be my question, does it have established infrastructure? And it does somewhat. It's just that'll need to be changed over. So we've got a net positive revenue, even though the trend is down.
Yeah.
And the expenses, you know, it's outpacing itself there. If we get past this COVID, it, it's going to pay for itself.
Yeah, right.
And if nothing else, we have that land and if we got to a place where it couldn't sustain itself, we could always go ahead and liquidate it then. But to trade it out for something that's going to be houses anyway and be able to save something that you can't reproduce, I just think it's a great way to go. And, you know, I think, like you said, having just a little time to be able to look over the finances.
That's all, that's all I want.
There's a path forward.
It's more about the finances and trust me, I, I'm for green space and this is a beautiful piece of property. I'm looking at it and it would be a shame to lose it. But at the same time, you know, you, you don't want to jump into something and then we have a park that we can't even take care of and then it just becomes rundown and we, we can't afford it. So, I mean, that's what we have to face. So, I mean, I'll, I'll
Look at the numbers.
And another thing that, for when, you know, Brian, not Mayor, but Foreman
Oh.
He's got programming around this stuff, if we keep this on from an operational view. When you get the program piece for camping, I know that you said camping might be on or off the table. That's their biggest revenue stream on, on their stuff. That's, I mean, for 19, that was 80% of the revenue. So just keep that in mind when you're doing the assessment as well.
Right. And the other thing they, they did let me know that I, which I didn't know, that 80% of the revenue from Camp Weewah is outside the Y. So it's only 20% of the revenue is from the, directly from the Y folks. So, which I think is good. I mean, obviously we, we would want to, you know, partner with them on that 20% if, if we were to take it over. But, I mean, and I tell you, the biggest thing we've all, we've all heard, you know, on the campaign trail is, you know, a community pool and there is a, is a pool out there that's Olympic sized pool. So it's, you know, which is pretty amazing. I, I never, never forget as a kid, they used to have a high, back when, you know, liability wasn't a, a big problem with, you know, insurance, they had a, they had a high, high diving, you know, platform and I used to jump off that thing and it scared me to death as a kid. So been there many a time. So anyway, okay, well, that's great. I appreciate everybody's input on that and we will, we will proceed forward. We'll, obviously we're going to need to do it in haste, not because we want to do things like this, but because it's, it's, it's the time we need to, to work at it fast. So anyway, with that, I appreciate everybody coming out and we'll call it a day.